Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoover.
Yep.
In there.
Yes. Okay, and the first topic is public comment. Is there any public comment on items that are? I'm sorry, items that are on the. Public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The first item is of discussion and direction regarding the 2023 Earth Day event. Primary purpose of this item is to solicit council feedback on whether to host the 2023 event in partnership with neighboring jurisdictions and some community-based organizations, or to do an Atherton specific one, much like last year's. This year's event will be managed and directed by our new management analyst, Rachel, sitting across from me there. She's here to provide any additional information on the staff report beyond what I'm going to open up with. But at the last EPC meeting, there was a group that came from Menlo Park to address the EPC about the opportunity to partner. There's no details on what that event would look like, where it would be, how it would operate, all that sort of stuff. So what we're requesting now is some council feedback on whether or not this is a direction the town should go. And if the council wants to move in this direction with a collaborative event instead of an Atherton-only event, staff in the EPC would likely need to commit to some of those collaborative efforts rather rapidly. So it wouldn't be practical to return to the council with a, this is what the event's going to look like, and here's how we're going to do it, sort of process. So it's recommended that if the council supports that, that staff take the lead on the event and operate the event within the $5,000 allocation that's in the budget. And if it doesn't evolve as a collaborative event, then staff would come back to the council with some sort of design for the 2023 event. And Rachel, as I mentioned, is here to answer any questions, as I believe you have a representative from the EPC as well.
Thanks, George. Before the dis. Can you hear me through this? Okay, great. Before getting into kind of the discussion and the questions, I just want. Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, much better. Okay. I'll just repeat those remarks for the folks online. Is that helpful? Okay, so today in the room, we also have Amy Farrell, a member of the EPC, as well as council member-elect Miles Holland, who plans last year's event in collaboration with staff. And there's a little bit of lag, so sorry if it sounds weird online. Okay. Oh, okay. So as George mentioned during the last EPC event on November 16th, we had two members of Menlo Park's Environmental Quality Commission, who are also members of 350 Silicon Valley, and they shared about their event last year, We Love Earth Day. That happened the week prior to the Atherton Earth Day event. They shared how they had similar activities and vendors, and offered that we could join forces this year for a cohesive event for kind of the region of our neighboring jurisdictions. And we discussed that opportunity at length at the EPC, and EPC members thought it'd be a great idea to leverage staff, funding, vendors and speakers from the neighboring jurisdictions and local community-based organizations. And so before getting further down the line of conversations with Menlo Park's Environmental Quality Commission and 350 Silicon Valley, we want to get a sense from the council on if that direction makes sense, or if we should stick to a local Atherton event where we may have to scale back some of the Earth Day events that we had last year due to budget constraints, but we would still have a healthy budget of $5,000 to spend, whether it's a collaborative event or an event here. So I'll just open that up for discussion and invite you to ask questions to me, the EPC or City Manager, Rogers.
Yeah, members of the council. Elizabeth.
Questions. Are we just doing questions, or can I? Okay. Um. So what I hear from you saying is that Menlo Park and the other group came and requested and suggested that we combine forces. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's an invitation.
Okay. I have a lot of comments because I've had, I have a lot of history with EPC.
I knew you would.
Yes.
But we're asking questions first.
Okay.
What did we spend last year?
We spent like $7,452 of the, and the budget was 5,000. I believe there's a request made to council to increase the budget.
The large amount of that was the Atherton newsletter, which we probably wouldn't do again this year. It was close to 2,000 of that.
And I have a question. How, how, how much money, if any, have the other jurisdictions offered to provide if we do a joint event?
Yeah, at this point, I've only reached out to Menlo Park, and they didn't share a financial commitment. They shared a commitment to have staffing at the event, as well as support with promotion and provide resources to make the event effective.
And have they been, do you know if they've been asked about making a financial commitment, or have they not been asked?
I don't know if they've been asked about making a financial commitment.
Okay, Bill?
The Silicon 350 is, is not affiliated with the town. It's not a committee of the town. Is that not correct? So it's a separate, independent group.
That's correct, yes.
Whose charter is?
Their charter's all around climate action, so they're working. 350 Silicon Valley is like a national organization. It's a local chapter focused on providing residents with things that they can do to reduce their carbon footprints.
They're a little aggressive sometimes, from what I'm reading in the papers. But that's just a comment that I shouldn't have made.
They're an advocacy group.
Diana.
Correct.
Other questions? Okay, not seeing further questions. Is there any public comment on this matter? I don't see any public comment in the room or online. So Elizabeth, you can now. Without.
I can follow up with a comment now that Vice Mayor opened it up with comments. So, you know, I, I've been on the Environmental Programs Committee a long, long time, from before I was ever elected to council. And it was when it was just in formation and started. And for many years, we had a relatively healthy budget until that was taken away. So my comment is, I think we should increase the budget. Number one, I think $5,000 is, is not enough to really do much. I think that joining forces makes a lot of sense because if this little jurisdiction here has an Earth Day and over here and here, you know, and it's like one weekend and another weekend, and you can join forces, I think that that makes a lot of sense. If it can be combined, I would ask where the venue would be. It would seem to me Burgess Park because it's a larger environment possibly, but Holbrook Palmer Park is certainly a lovely venue. And I think that there should be some guidelines as to what is going to be promoted, exhibited, so that it's, it's not on the lunatic fringe in, in, in ways, but that it's relevant and meaningful for our residents. So I think that with the Environmental Program Committee membership, as it is right now, we're down one active member who's now going to be on council and not really involved as a participant, that joining forces makes a lot of sense, especially at this stage, because this is when we have to start planning.
Okay. Other comments? Diana?
Well, last year, we had 300 people. And the things that I thought were great about it was that it was very local, and we had the activity with all of us that was definitely Atherton-based when we did leaf blowers. And the, the lot of the residents were families with kids and people bringing their grandchildren. And the disadvantage of, I'm going to say both advantage and disadvantage. The disadvantage of partnering is we may lose the local feel of the event. And we, our, ours did have a different flavor than other ones I've been to, including the one in Menlo Park. Has a different feel to it. Although we did overlap, if you did a Venn diagram, there were a lot of the same best vendors, but it had overall a different feel to it. And on the other hand, the advantages are that we would have more helpers because we're very understaffed right now. Although Stacy did an amazing job last year, and it's very much turnkey, meaning that she organized everything so that we can send out emails and replicate the same thing pretty easily. We do still need to make things a little bit better. There were some things that didn't work, but we can fix those. So there's, I can see both sides of it, and I think we have to decide as a council the nature of what it is that we want to do.
Bill?
I've said before, I, I thought last year's event was terrific. And, and I understand that, you know, we did an eight-page mailing to all residents that perhaps won't happen this year. And there were some runaway costs with regards to the food vendor that, you know, that wouldn't happen again either. So I think that really with the job that, that primarily, you know, Diana participated along with Stacy with working with vendors, getting vendors to volunteer and fund things themselves. I thought that they did a terrific job, and I thought that it went very well with our, with our community and some of our neighbors. You know, my question to George was, well, where is it going to be held? If it's going to be held in, in Menlo Park, or if it's going to be, some of it's going to be over at MA, some of it's going to be over in Menlo Park, some of it's going to be at Holbrook Palmer Park. I think you're going to lose the inclusiveness of a lot of people coming and participating and seeing everything, as opposed to, you know, they might go to the movies. It was a number of years ago, we had a movie over at MA at the Performing Arts Center, and then there were some displays and things like that over at the park that were done by the students. And, you know, a fair number of people went to the, to the movies, but the same people didn't necessarily show up at the park. Whereas when we had our own, I, you know, I thought, you know, people were there and they were exposed to everything. And even if they only went to see one thing, you couldn't have, because of the inclusiveness of the area where we were, you know, you couldn't help but see the other things. And so I, I thought that what they did last year was terrific. You know, I'd hate to see something like that change because I thought we had, you know, we had over 300 people come, which was, was terrific. So, so my, my feeling is, you know, maybe we need to raise the budget. I don't have an issue with that, per se, because I thought that they did a terrific job, and I'd like to see something like that again. But I think that, you know, we, you know, doing something ourselves might be in our, in our residents and our best interest. But that's just my thoughts at, at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, I, I'll give a couple of comments. I, I thought that last year's event was great for two reasons. Maybe three. One was there were, it, it was very Atherton. It really felt Atherton, you know, and, and I think that's because there was multiple generations of people there, and there were a lot of local people, and they came to our park. So, you know, I would, that same group of people go to Burgess Park. It's possible, but it would take a lot of work. I wouldn't be very confident that that would happen. I do think we should do outreach. I think that the outreach that we did last time was great. I think we should do that outreach again. I think the big cost problem wasn't so much with the food. There were some organizational things with the food, but the big cost problem was with the issue of the Athertonian, which I don't think we should do again. But if we had a good reason to spend $7,500, I wouldn't have any problem with it. I, I think what Elizabeth said is right. That this has been, you know, other than the night out that we do in August, this is the one event we really do every year. And it's changed over the last 10 years. It's been quite different, other than being in the park every year. So I would miss it not being in the park. I do think because of the next item on our agenda, that it might make sense not to do it in the park, because I'd like to see this construction plan be done as efficiently as it can, and I wouldn't want to interrupt it for a month. Although I'm not 100% sure that I can be as optimistic as assuming that we could interrupt it for a month. But I, I also, you know, I, I could be convinced differently, but I get concerned that if we bring in other groups, and I know Menlo Spark really well, they're very, very involved in Peninsula Clean Energy. There's just a different feel than I think what we had last year. And I think their event was quite a bit different last year than our event. Ours felt, it was sort of more homey and more family. It, it was Atherton, you know, and we used to have that feel with the Easter Day event every year, but it's been hard to find that feeling. We got it last year, so I sort of hate to lose it. I know Elizabeth has.
Mr. Polina has. Did you want to make a comment?
He, he would raise his hand if he wanted to make a comment.
You know, he's so polite. Okay. No, I, I just, I, I really have to kind of put some perspective on this. Last year's was wonderful. It was fabulous for all the reasons that have been articulated. Every Earth Day event over the last 12, 14 years has been different and had a different look and feel to it, a different hook to it. And the, the one that Vice Mayor was talking about, that it was bifurcated with the movie over at the Performing Arts at MA, and then the event at, it was not done on the same day. They were different days. They approached different audiences, and we did it actually two years in a row. We did a movie one year, and then we did a panel discussion another year. And it was very well received, not only by Athertonian, Atherton people, but from the public at large because of the topic. And then the Earth Day at the Holbrook Palmer Park with the student challenges. The first Earth Day I ever went to, I think, was in 2006. And we had all the little kids over here. We're at the park by the Jennings Pavilion outside, and they were, they had chickens, and they had little contests and stuff. That took an enormous amount of time, and there was one resident that really worked tirelessly to get all of those students involved in student challenges and teachers to the point where we couldn't do that anymore because it was just unwieldy and unattainable. And, but during that, and then one time, we had it at Menlo School in the big gymnasium, a huge event. It was just huge. There were booths everywhere. So there's, and we had a big budget. I think we had $30,000 a year. Yes, yes, for many years. 30,000.
I wasn't.
But we cut that before you got here.
That is correct.
All right, I'm not suggesting 30,000. But we had T-shirts, live green, Atherton 2020, Polish shirts. I mean, it was a really big deal. And again, there was a small group of residents that really pushed it through, okay? We don't have that small group of residents or one person that is going to take it and just, you know, run with it. And that's why I feel that this year, we're not going to duplicate last year. That was very special. Even though you've got it all scheduled out, it'll be different no matter what because, you know, and people don't want everything to be exactly the same, like all the electric vehicles and stuff, because that's done so much. But I think the mayor brings up a good point that if we're going to do a park circulation plan, that it may not be in good condition to host the event. But we're in control of that, I think. We can choose what venue we want to have. I mean, it's not that it's going to be Burgess, or it's going to be Men, Menlo. Anyway, so those are some of my counterpoints and just observations. I'm not saying that if we collaborate, that it's going to ruin the look and feel of what we, what appeals to Atherton. And I think that a lot of people came because of that publication, because it was well-done. It went out to every home, and they saw it, you know. And so I, I wouldn't be so quick to discount it of doing it again. Mr. Polina has.
Thanks, thanks for the history of Earth Day in Atherton. You skipped a couple of years, I think, but.
2006.
Spending $30,000, I'd have a big problem with that. For one thing, what nobody could tell me was how many of the people in attendance last year were from Atherton. So I don't know whether we're spending the money on Redwood City, or we're spending it on our taxpayers. So I think it should be held at Holbrook. When, when is it, Andy? I don't remember when it is.
It's in the spring.
Middle of April.
And, and we think we'll be under construction already in the park?
In April?
That's you, yeah.
It'll be close. I think Earth Day is the 22nd of April. Our project schedule, pretty much after getting the feedback from the council today, we're looking to finalize, we'll get into it in the next item, but looking to finalize the design and come back in January to get authorization to bid. And so with that, the bids will come back, hopefully for award at the March meeting. And so it'll take a little bit of time for the contract to get executed. But, you know, construction, hopefully, will start in April. I just can't tell you what they're going to be working on first and.
Well, I'd rather see it done at Holbrook Palmer Park and, but I think we'd have to make a decision now that we're, we're going to not start construction till May 1st. Well, I, I, I don't think you want to do it with tractors and, no.
I, I actually feel better about it with what you just said, Robert. I, I think it's realistic that we would come back for award of the contract at the March meeting. That's the third Wednesday of March. Then it's going to take at least a week to put a contract together. So you're not going to have a contract until probably the first week of April. And if they've got the contract the first week of April, they're, they're not going to start disruptive construction by the third week of April. So I think it's close, but it makes me comfortable that we could do it in Holbrook Palmer Park. And I, I, I wouldn't want to delay anything around the contract.
Just to clarify, I'm not suggesting that we award 30,000 budget, okay, this year. And that was a long time ago, before you were, you know, around.
That was back when spend thrifts ran Atherton. I mean, if, if you're really vehement about pushing the project as fast as you can, then maybe this is a year we could try and do a joint effort at Burgess or somewhere else.
We also have the Newtown Center here. That's possible for that sort of event. You could line up vehicles and, you know, venues to have meetings and things like that.
Well, there's not as much parking as in the park. That, that's for sure. I, I don't think the other only alternative is Burgess. I mean, there's also, there's the college.
You, you need a microphone station.
Just coming in. What has been discussed is having it at the high school, MA High School. There was some interest in trying to get the high school students more involved in Earth Day. And then also Menlo College was also discussed as an alternative venue. Both because both venues would have a lot easier parking, which was one of our big issues with Earth Day Festival last year, was parking management.
Well, I, I think.
Always is. Parking always is a big problem. And at the Easter egg hunt, which was by the Danes, the parking was horrendous, but it was fun. I mean, you know, people loved it.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I know we're talking about essentially a week, a week and a half. I mean, the, the park project is really all over the athletic field. We've, we've had the Earth Day over at the right in front of the north of the, of the park house. So, yeah, I don't see how, if they want to mobilize and get started, they can be over by the bridge and things like that on the athletic field. But I just don't think that a week is going to make a big difference, you know. And so I, I'd prefer to keep it at Holbrook Palmer Park. I thought it was, like I said, I thought it was great. I thought people got a lot out of it. That's what we want. You know, we want people to be involved. And, you know, this other proposal, we have no details on. And I, I feel uncomfortable without any details. I know that we could just say, well, yeah, but we're only going to spend $5,000. But, you know, I don't know, you know, what we're going to get, and is that going to be enough? And we don't know whether or not Menlo Park and the other jurisdictions are going to put any money into it. So I just, I really feel that having it in our park and doing it ourselves is probably great. The, you know, the guys, you, you all did a terrific job. There's no question about it. So thank you again for doing that. And, and I know that, you know, now we have a staff member who will help. And so anyway, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you so much. Perhaps I can give some additional context as to how Menlo Park came to us. So I'm a new resident and actually found out about the Earth Day Festival from Nextdoor, so via social media. And I'm sure a lot of people found out about Earth Day, the Earth Day event via Nextdoor. So we don't necessarily have a great, we don't have a lot of metrics on who attended and where they were from. Once you extend it to social media, obviously, it's, it's the entire community. I thought the event was fantastic. It inspired me to, to join this committee. And what I really liked was the fact that you had the lectures, which appealed to a certain audience in addition to the events for children and, and for families. I attended an event at the high school in Palo Alto at Gunn, and I was organized by the students. And it was there that I met some people from Menlo Park, from Spark and some of the other nonprofits. And I was so impressed with the students being the next generation and the importance that, that is placed on, on just their knowledge and recognition of the impacts of climate change. And they took such leadership in organizing the tables and bringing on speakers, outside speakers. It was actually hosted in collaboration with the, the mayor of Palo Alto and a mayor from Indianapolis. So pretty high level, I would say. And, and it just got me thinking about how we can engage high school students and yet retain the same family feel that, that was organized, you know, last year at the festival or this past year. So I joined one of the 360 events, and it was there, I mentioned who I was, that they said, oh, we, we didn't realize you were going to be coming, but, you know, glad you're here. Would you all ever consider doing a joint event? So it was, it was very spontaneous. I don't think they were coming with a formal proposal. It was a conversation that was really, I think, inspired by just wanting to educate more people and having more resources. The fact of, I think Stacy carried so much of the weight, and now we can do a lot of work together. But having more hands on deck is actually more important than money because this is almost a grassroots type of event. We want to make sure the vendors that we continue with or. Um because this is almost a grassroots type of event. We wanna make sure the vendors that we continue with or that we reach out to. Are vendors that are bought in to the environmental aspects, even some of the social aspects that come along with Earth Day. So um you know, again, I'm new, but I just wanted you to understand that this wasn't a formal proposal. It was really based on a Zoom call that three sixty had organized. And I thought um I brought it to the other committee members, just thinking it was interesting. I don't know that you wanna expand it beyond um uh the one neighborhood. Um I will mention also, my son is a sophomore at MA. Um and I reached out to the principal's office and they are actually passing that on to the two chairs of the science department. So two teachers there, you've had experience working with MA before. I guess they're exploring the concept, so we don't. MA is may or may not be a venue. Um and then my other son is at Menlo, so um. And I've I've gotten to know the head of their um community development there. And she um would be a potential person to collaborate if we were to do it at one of the schools and Stacy's mentioned, you know, Menlo College. So just some other ideas. I did find parking a little bit challenging. I came late to the festival, but I did appreciate the family feel. And being in a park and kind of being enclosed, so you were forced to, you know, kind of attend all the tables and stuff. So anyway, a little perspective there.
Yeah, so let let me just add, I I think that if we chose to do it at MA, there's real positives to that. I mean, I love the idea of getting closer to MA. There've been some challenges with MA and and this would be a good thing. If the high school students get excited, like we've seen students in some prior Earth Day events get really very involved. Uh that could be a very positive thing.
So just to follow. Just real quickly about the MA and the students. The key is teachers. The key is the principals and teachers. If you can get the teachers involved, then they create. The challenge, if you will, you know, and the credits that these kids can get, you know, and they're usually upper. Classmen. Uh go ahead. Can you add to that?
Fifty, we had fifty volunteers last year. A lot of them were from MA and from uh from Menlo. And as they went all the way out to Portola Valley. So the relationships in the lot, some of the schools uh like Sacred Heart and Portola Valley. Uh have a service requirement. So we were able to so offer service credit, including at MA, although I don't know if it's service, but we got credit. So we have that relationship in place. We featured the artwork from our local high school students. And that class is willing to participate and they will do a new show for us. So we used the show from before, the year before. But so we have those relationships in place. If we choose not to go with our neighbors. The what we do risk is that we have to compete on resources. There's only so many vendors. We like, at the year that we did, last year, we wanted to be part of the Silicon Valley Electric Car Group. And they had our, were already committed to Sunnyvale. So luckily, this year, we had such a good turnout and so many vendors that I think people will take us seriously. But last year, we actually went to Menlo Park and asked if we could join them. So last year, we asked to join them and this year, they asked to join us. But when you're first starting, I think we're in a different position now. I think that we will have people come back. Both the vendors, I think, the uh Stacy did a survey, an outtake survey of the thirty-five plus vendors. They all loved it. And I think the residents will come back, cause now they'll know to come back with their children, et cetera. So. There, we have to separate the decision of whether we have it in the park versus whether we have it with other groups and whether we allow them to participate. Even if we do it here and it's our event, will we allow other groups to participate?
Yeah, so um first off. I I would think that, you you know, obviously, when we're organizing it, we could invite. Their groups to to participate. I don't have an issue with that. I don't think that, I think that's a good idea. As far as doing a joint project, though, like I said, you know, right now, we're making a decision. And we don't really have any detail. And by the time we get the detail, it'd be too late to change. So. Uh as far as doing a joint event, perhaps it might be worthwhile to say, yes, we wanna do something with y'all. But uh can we, can we say commit to that we'll do it next year with you? Fully and we'll plan that out so we can bring it to our council and you can bring it to your board, et cetera, et cetera. I mean. So not saying that they can't participate in ours, but but if they wanna do a joint one, that we could do it. And plan for that next year, but that's that's one way to get through it too. So anyway.
I feel strongly that we have it in Atherton. I've I feel less strong about whether we do it jointly or not, do it jointly. But I think having it in our town is, for me, the most important part. And I'd prefer to have it in the park if we can, cause that's, again, all worked out. We know where we put things. We know the things that we need to fix. We didn't have enough power. We didn't have water. There were some things we know to fix to do it again. But if we were in any other venue in Atherton, so I guess the one thing for me is I want it to be in our town. Yeah, yeah, they're, yeah, they're in our, they're in our town. So those would be fine with me too, if we didn't do it in the park. But I, as far as joining with others, I I can go either way on that.
Well, it sounds like the most important thing is that we decide whether we're gonna actually formally invite. Other people and try to do something coordinated with, in particular, with the town of Menlo Park, which. Could be large, right? I mean, Menlo Park is four times or five times our size. I think that I I agree with what Diane said about doing it in Atherton. I I guess when I think about the locations, um I like the park. It it's always been there and it's been great there. Uh I I think the idea of MA is attractive. Uh I'd love to see the high school students get more involved. I I think that could be very positive. And if we can leave it up to the committee of one which to choose and. They can be, I mean, I think they're gonna have to make a decision before we know contractually. So they're gonna have to decide where it's gonna happen. Um I'd go, I'd go with either one. Uh I don't, I don't have any problem with coordinating with. The three fifty group or Menlo Spark if they want to, but I I I would not wanna see it at Burgess Park. I just don't think it'd be good for us.
So to the mayor, I if I could just make a suggestion. Because I I what I've heard is that the idea was just kind of broached. It hasn't been vetted. It hasn't been fully discussed in any way, shape or form. And so maybe we could uh say, you know, EPC, go back, representative, go back and. Talk a little bit more with these people and see what ideas you might come up with and then bring them back to the. Without us saying, yes, you know, we approve, you know, a joint event.
I I I think that's fine, but I think there's also a pretty clear direction that we want an Atherton feel to the event. And um that the preference that I've heard stated here is either at Holbrook Palmer Park or MA. And I think that's good direction to the committee.
Um Mayor DeGolia, do we wanna open it up for public comment?
Well, I've already done that, but I can do it again. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, I don't see any, uh and I wanna make sure we move on and deal with this bigger subject on our agenda.
Couple of, couple of quick questions. Uh the three fifty group, that's not affiliated with the city of Menlo Park. Did representatives from the Menlo Park Committee actually come to the EPC from the town themselves?
They're a part of the Environmental Quality Commission, which is similar to our EPC.
And are you familiar with their process in terms of the way that they approve their event? In 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 our history of Earth Day event, particularly the recent history. The council has wanted to be intimately involved in what movie is selected, what speakers are coming, what the details of the event are and how specific they are. And I'm not sure that that is the case on the other side. Uh so. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up as a potential point of challenge.
The Menlo Park City Council didn't make any decisions on last year's We Love Earth Day Festival they attended and they supported in other ways. And another note is Earth Day is on Saturday, April twenty second. It's always on April twenty second. So last year, there was the benefit of the Saturday before, the Saturday after, and now I think everyone's gonna be competing for that same Saturday.
Yeah, so we did ask them if Menlo Park gave them money and they didn't for last year's event. So I think we'd asked. If they could get money if we are partnering, cause I think that would be not fair to have Menlo Park get equal billing if they're not footing some of the bill. Um but I think one of the benefits also of partnering is that if we're having a big regional event, given that. Birthday is April twenty second, we'll have a lot of competition. It also puts us in a different. Uh bigger position for getting donations if we need to, getting bigger vendors, making sure the bigger, you know, the car dealerships, et cetera. If we're coming at it as, you know, a bigger regional event, I think we'll get better turnout from exhibitors. And also potentially open some donation avenues for us. Last year, we got donations from Cow Water, Green Waste and Peninsula Clean Energy. So if we didn't wanna raise our budget, that this is a another way that we could get access to different funding.
Last year, we had hoped that we had partnered with Arbor Day and it it ends up that. Earth Day is celebrated every we, every weekend of that month. So we don't actually, we thought that if we're gonna go with the other group and we're gonna be bigger, then let's go on actual Earth Day. But we could do it earlier, which would help with our park fears. So we could do it the weekend before. I mean, so that's an option too. The the EPC had said, let's do it on the actual day, because we know we had a big one last year. We could have an even bigger one if we join with other people. But if we wanted to do it earlier, we could. The other thing we regretted last year is that we had a separate Arbor Day event. Now, that event could have been rolled into Earth Day so that we have just one event, because um they were giving tours, tree tours and stuff. So that part of our Earth Day got a little smaller, because all the people who would have normally done the tree tours were doing them on a different day. So that's another consideration, but we had already, the EPC had had voted to do it on actual Earth Day. So if we don't care about Earth Day, that's another consideration too.
Well, I would say if we're gonna do it in the park and. We don't do it on Earth Day, we should do it the week before. We we definitely shouldn't do it afterwards, cause the the earlier, the better with respect to the contract. I mean, that one, one reason to consider the park is if we're gonna do cars like we did last year, this may well be the last year that we have asphalt. That cars can come in on, cause the that asphalt will be gone next year. Yeah, but they could also, the cars could park in one of the parking lots. It it's not prohibitive.
So is the basic summary to flesh out the idea a little more and then return it to the council?
I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, everyone's good with that?
Yeah, I'll reach out to them right away.
Great. Okay, let's move on to item number two.
Uh thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um we're here uh before you today. Seeking your input and direction on the Holbrook Palmer Park Access and Circulation Project. It's been a little while since we have come to you and so as part of uh the presentation today, we're gonna kind of run through the basics of. What is included in the project. Um with me on the online today, I have um Rick Navarro from Interwest, who has been our project manager. And Mike Kuntz from Verde Design, who's been the project designer. And so there are some key elements that we need your feedback on, um including input on required signage. Recognizing our grant partners, um how we want those to be, how we want those to look, location sizing, that kind of thing. As well as there are a few element, I mean, we're, we are um exceeding the budget that was allocated for the project. And so trying to figure out how we can um bring the project closer to the to the project budget. And so we have some suggestions for additive alternates. Um and so if you could go through the next slide, please, Anthony. Yeah, so we'll start off by going through uh the project layouts and design elements as well as uh. Uh talking about that fund, fund, the signage required for funding and uh some potential bid alternates. I'm gonna start off and then I'm gonna hand it off to uh our project manager and the design team. Next slide, please. Um so up on the screen and in front of you, you should have a schematic kind of showing. Um the general layout of the improvements. I did print out some bigger pictures for you to see. And so the first element really is providing pedestrian access into the park, which we don't currently have. Pedestrians are required to walk in the vehicle path and the driveways, both the entry and exit to get into the park. So the first things that we are doing is basically creating a um, an accessible entry path. And so that includes some accessibility ramps across the driveway entry and exit points. Um including truncated domes. And to fit that in, we have to move the fire hydrants that are near the entry and exit. And building a concrete sidewalk around uh from Watkins, basically to a focal point. You'll see on your diagram, the concrete's in kind of a gray color. And then um the red circle there is a decorative paving. Uh statement area where that sidewalk ties into various pathways at the park. Uh there'll be a couple of amenities in the, so in the adjacent area. The yellowish color, yellow-orange color is uh decomposed granite. Uh one of the other main and other main things that we're doing is replacing uh some of the asphalt walkways with decomposed granite. And a big change is removal of the loop driveway that goes um around to the main house. Uh frontage stairs. And so that asphalt area, as the mayor mentioned in the previous item, is. Uh going to be removed, replaced with a decomposed granite pathway. And um the adjacent area re-landscaped. Um we are also creating a new picnic area. We had to relocate. The old picnic area by the um the oak tree and the uh playground. Away from the oak tree due to its um precarious situation. Um and so what we have is a formalized picnic area, including accessible picnic tables. Um keying off of that pathway. Um we have a additional decorative paver areas. That are keyed into the junction points of the pathways. Um leading over to the event garden and um another pave paving area in front of the main house. And so the green areas on on the image, in essence, represent planting slash mulching areas. And um we have additional um information with regards to actual plant materials and that kind of thing, if you wanna get into that. Level of detail. Um but for the purposes of going over the scope, we're not really doing that. So the next slide, please. Well, it looks like we have a comment from the vice mayor. Question.
I didn't see on the plans, uh you know, you mentioned the area around the oak. But I don't see any improvements to put in a permanent fence there. So I don't understand why that wouldn't be part of this. Because alls we have is some construction stands with some tape that keeps falling down. And you know, and people just step over those and gather and things like that. So while we're doing this, it would make sense to actually put that in.
Uh we can either do that either with the project or separately from, separate from the project. I think we had allocated a little bit of money in our operating budget. To address that. I think one of the key things is actually picking the fencing type that would be going around that tree.
Okay, we've been talking about it for approximately a year.
You mentioned the entry and um you have really haven't gone into the detail on that and maybe you're gonna do that in your report. But at some point, can you just take some time and focus on exactly how the entry is gonna change?
I'll I'll have the design team get into that. We have a later on slide. As well. And so this second. As well. And so this second slide, you know, this second page on the uh, design, if you want to flip in your. Um, your presentation there um, is kind of uh, tying in and showing what's happening. Uh, towards the exit drive. Uh, again, um, on the accessibility front, providing an accessible. Pedestrian pathway in and out of the park along the exit drive. Starting with, um, basically it'll be concrete from Watkins up to the dry, up. Through the driveway to the Gilmore House, and then it'll transition to decomposed granite. Along the driveway as it comes directly into the park. Um, we do have a couple of pedestrian crossings that'll be elevated crosswalks. Um, so we'll be removing the speed humps that are currently in the driveway and replacing those with um, elevated crosswalks. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to um, to Rick. Who'll actually, I think it's the next slide that actually shows um, the entry and exit gates and you can, oh, I'm sorry. This slide here kind of shows an area in the parking lot that we've designated. Uh, pretty much as a contractor laydown area so that they can have some room in the parking lot to keep some equipment and. Materials so that it's, they're not hauling stuff in and out, so it'll be kind of a secured laydown area. Yeah, and one of the items that we have is. Is actually to repair the drain line that is uh, leading out of that parking lot. So, next slide, please, Anthony. Okay, Rick, you want to take it from here?
Thanks, Robert. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, this slide shows um, the entrance and exit. And um, I don't know if I can control, control it, because it might be easier to kind of um. You know, be able to control it. Would that be possible? Or not?
Um, I don't know. Do you have the ability to annotate on yours?
Um, let's see. You know, I don't see, I don't see it. So, well, I, I can just go through um. The proposed improvements. So if we're looking at the um, upper left. A photo of the, that's, that's the entrance. Uh, this whole area, the, the hardscaping or the paving will be removed and replaced. Like Robert said, we will have um, ramps. On either side of the entrance, uh, parallel to, to Watkins. The. The chain link fence you see to, on the right of the photo. That, that area, that will be removed and replaced with a decorative fencing. And we have a um, sample photo of the suggested decorative fencing that was um, suggested by Parks and Rec Committee. Um, the, the fencing or the entrance gate, the white fence, uh, wood material, that area. Um, the, yeah, those will be, the one on the right will be moved. Uh, I mean, removed, the, the gate itself, so on the right side. Um, the left portion of that uh, assembly. Um, that needs to be removed because it is in the way of the. Um, our new path or new sidewalk. The, the portion to the right. That will remain. Um, it won't be affected. We just asked the contractor to just protect it in place. Um, the, on the left side. That will be, that will be, need to be relocated a little bit to the left of this photo. So what we show on the plans is just for the contractor to uh, relocate it. And uh, we show it moving uh, slightly to, to the left, again, to accommodate. The improvements that we are proposing at that location. Um, there will be, like I said, there will be sidewalk, um. At, at this location on the right of the photo, so um. So that's what's going on, on the, at, at the entrance. For the exit location. Um, again, we're gonna be removing all of the hardscaping and replacing it. Similar to the entrance, we are putting um, ADA ramps with the truncated domes. Uh, again, similar to the entrance, we are proposing decorative uh, fencing to replace uh, the. Chain link fence that have the slats right there where the exit only sign is and, and um, and similar on the opposite side. On, 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 at this location, there's gonna be a. The gate on the right side, we will need to remove uh, the portion of it that's. Parallel, running parallel to Watkins, so. Um, it's, it's behind the bushes right now. That needs, that needs to be removed. And then the um, the rest of it will just need to be relocated to, to the right. Uh, a little bit. And then on the other side, there's just a slight adjustment to the portion of the fence. That is running parallel to Watkins. So not, not there, not, not that one, but uh, that one right there. Yeah, that one. There's just gonna be a slight adjustment to it. It has to be moved back towards the park in order to. Uh, so, so that our improvements can um, can be accommodated. But those are the changes um, at the entrance. Uh, the next slide, I believe, will show the um. The decorative fencing that.
Before you go on to the next.
Before you move on, let's see if there's question.
Okay.
So I, I have a question. I understand the movement of the, the portions of the gate that will be retained. That we're seeing here, that which is the white wooden gating. It, yes, I, I'm assuming it will be put behind the new walkway. So. Is that correct?
Co- correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Diane?
I do. Is that a historic entrance gate or a historic?
No.
Because it's not particularly attractive. And there isn't, there isn't.
None of the wood that you see here is historic, but if you look at the exit only, the lower image. If you look straight through uh, in, in the image at where the roadway turns. The wooden fence that you see before the house, straight through the opening, that's historic.
Okay.
That's the only historic piece that's left there.
I guess it seems, well, all right, it's questions, all right. So um, the entrance and exit in the past. There was a discussion with the fire department about the weight limits and the sizes of the fire trucks going in. I'm assuming that's all taken care of in this.
No.
That was the bridge.
That, that would require replacement of the bridges.
So that's, that problem wasn't solved by working on the entrance at all. So we still have that same issue, that big fire.
Yeah, there, there still are load restrictions on the bridge.
Is there any aesthetic, does the gate close and open?
No.
So it's, it's just decorative and it's not historic and it's not particularly attractive.
Well, it's been there for a long time, but it's not historic. And, and whether it's attractive or not is probably a matter of opinion.
And where's the sign for the park?
Well, I, I think you can.
See the sign that says.
So, the, the signage for the park is actually rather limited and not very um. Predominant. And so you can see on top of the exit gate, there is a, a little sign there that says Holbrook. Palmer Park, and then similarly on the entry, Anthony, if you can go up there, you can see that there is uh, an image there also. For the park. That's the limited signage that we have um, at the park. Other than an even smaller um, guide sign on. Watkins Avenue saying turn either right or left to get in.
Are, are the parking spots gonna be affected by this? Are there more or less parking spots in the park?
Um, overall, there really isn't any change. Um, there's a minor reconfiguration along the entry drive. But um, historically, you know, say before town staff moved into the park. Um, while we were under construction here, um, it was uh. Drop-off parking, so it was limited duration, meaning, you know, five minute drop-off and stuff. During our construction, we took that restriction away and it's been striped for regular parking. Um, the intent with this is that it's just gonna re- remain as parking along that. That edge of the driveway.
So overall, we have the same number of parks.
Yes.
For events. And one last question, when we were, we were looking at samples of uh, fencing before. Will that fence go along the whole way of Watkins?
Um, let me make one other comment with regards to the parking.
Okay.
Um, I believe along the exit drive and even along the entry drive. We have a whole bunch of mulched areas that, again, during our residency at the park, we allowed people to. Park in those mulched areas. The intent behind the work that we're doing is to. Prevent that from happening. We really don't want folks parking there on a permanent basis. We allowed it because of the amount of parking that we took up while we were at the park. People have continued to park in those mulched areas, and so we kind of want to reclaim those areas back. And so we say, are there gonna be any changes? That is a change to what is there today. Um, with regards to the decorative fencing. If retained within the project, this is one of the alternates that we have. It's limited to the area pretty much at the entry and exit drives. We have a separate project that is going to be re, reevaluating the walkway. Along Watkins Avenue and the fencing behind that walkway right above the channel. And so the intent would be that it all matches up. Um, if, and again, we're gonna get into the alternate discussion later. If it is not replaced with decorative fencing, we're still gonna need fencing for safety. So whether it's chain link or whatever on a temporary basis. Um, just because we're dropping out the decorative part of the fencing, we're still gonna need fencing. Um, and so there'll be some cost reduction, but it's not a no-cost item. But, you know, well, I think Rick's next slide actually shows what the design selected for that um. That decorative fencing is. Any other questions before we move forward?
Just, just to clarify on the parking that you just mentioned, i- if, if I'm reading it right. Looking at the exit item, uh, but it's probably true on the entrance. Running, running along the walkway is a six-inch curb now, right? That's gonna prevent people. From parking in between the trees.
Uh, on that side, yes, and you'll also have the walkway. So people aren't gonna jump that to, to park on that side. On the other side, it's not gonna be as prominent, but we're gonna probably have to either, we're gonna have, we are remulching that area. Uh, there may be some, I need to look at the next plan. Yeah, so that area is gonna be remulched.
But it looks like there's also a six-inch curb over there before the DG walkway.
Well, the DG walkway, I'll call it on the lower part of the, I mean, on the lower side. That, that's gonna prevent people from parking on that side. On the other side of the driveway, it's predominantly gonna be remulched. Yes.
Aren't there, aren't they already working out there under the pines on the side towards the North Meadow? They're, they've been digging over there for a while. Uh, they've been digging a trench and it looked like they were putting in a curb.
Uh, the limited work that we did there um, along the driveway was to replace the water service line. To the Gilmore House. And so that was on that side. Uh, pretty much it'll be under the, the DG walkway or right adjacent to it. They came across the road from the backflow preventers and then. Like you said, along the exit drive towards the Gilmore House to provide a new water service line. That work is, is complete and um, has been restored and covered up.
Okay. That had been an ideal time to put the curb in.
Well, they weren't doing curbing work. They were just digging in the dirt and putting in the um, the water line. They were plumbers.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, um, next slide, Anthony, and then Rick, you can start talking about the fencing again.
Yes. So this is the decorative fencing that was uh, recommended by the Parks and Rec Committee. Again, we are just installing this at the entrance and um, exit areas. Um, to, to provide essentially safety and to replace the existing. Um, chain link fence, um, that's uh, along the uh, the channel there. Uh, we need to replace it because we are installing new sidewalk um, in the vicinity. And so uh, that, uh, the grades um, changed so that now we have to remove the existing fence. So we decided we would replace it with this decorative fence.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, it looks familiar. Is it ma- matching what we have along the rail?
Uh, fairly closely, but lower. I mean, the fence that we have along the rail corridor is about eight feet. Tall or so. Uh, Rick, correct me, is this about four feet or so tall?
Two inches is what it says on the.
Forty-two inches tall.
Yeah, but it's the same.
Same style.
Same style.
Which I think is a good thing.
Okay, and if carried forward, we could carry it up and down Watkins.
Park and Rec had made uh, this recommendation.
Yeah, so I, I forgot to mention that, you know, since we came to the council sometime ago to go over the project scope and what we were doing. Get some feedback back at that time. Uh, the project team has been regularly having conversations at the Park and Rec Committee. Re-soliciting their feedback and incorporating that into the project. And so what you have in front of you and what we've gone over today. Includes all of that feedback that we've received.
Just, I, I, I've got a comment. Just looking at the. Previous slides that showed the white decorative fence that Diana thought wasn't attractive. Um, and this slide, and then looking at the images of the entrance and the exit, it looks like. The amount of space for the white decorative fence is quite small. I mean, if you look at the exit, for example, it's, I think it's item twenty-seven. It's one little, I don't know how big that is, but it can't be more than. Four or five feet, a panel on the right that's well into the park. Not, it looks like it's quite different than it was.
Okay, so Anthony, I'm sorry to, to assist with that. Why don't you jump back to the picture of the exit?
Yeah.
And then zoom in there. Um, so.
So with, so my question really is, will this forty-two inch black decorative fence only go the length of. What we see is the chain link fence, like with the exit only sign on the right and the chain link fence going up to the. Uh, the wooden fence that's parallel to Watkins on the left. Or it looks like it comes more deeply into the park in the image, which is the image of the.
It'll wrap around the corner along Watkins, so just a bit beyond the exit only to the right. And a bit beyond the post that you see to the left. And then it'll come up. And tie into where the um, the wood fence is. Is that correct, Rick?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
It's not going any further into.
It's not going any, it's not intended to go any further into the park. Um, beyond where that wood fence is. And so um, there are some adjustments that'll be happening to that wood fence, as Rick had mentioned. But the, the iron-looking fence is not going into the park beyond those gates.
Are, are we keeping the wood fence? No.
Yes.
So you're saying we're gonna have a decorative iron fence, we're gonna have a wood fence, and then we're gonna have what, what here looks like white picket fence is probably not. And then you have this kind of trail. So you've got like four different materials on the entrance now.
As I say, all, all of the stuff that's white is wood. Some of it. As I say, all, all of the stuff that's white is wood. Some of it is, I said, there's that one panel that looks like it's picket. Where there's a couple of picket panels and then there's lattice panels.
But you are going to keep the wood to the.
That's all gonna stay. The only thing that's gonna happen, there's a couple pieces that'll be moved a bit to accommodate things.
So black fence?
That stops it.
White fence.
No, it's black fence stopping at white fence.
I, I, I think that council member's point is that the variance of materials. Going into the park is diverse, and is that something we want?
It's only, we're only adding, we're, we're switching out a really ugly. Uh, material or the black wrought iron fence, the circles. Which is a new material, it's gonna look a lot better than what's there now. And then the white fences are just kind of staying the same, except they're just kind of being.
Tweaked a little bit, yeah.
Tweaked a little bit and hopefully we'll get repainted, right?
Yeah, I'm sure they will repaint it, but.
I mean.
Looks to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks to me like the forty-two inch black fence is gonna be taller. Than what is currently, it looks like chain link.
Yeah, so you have, where, where the exits, where you have the exit only, it is a chain link fence with wood slats.
Yeah. Forty-two inches, I don't think.
It's pretty close to that.
It is, okay. So.
It has to be to code, you know. For, well, you know, a height, a certain height.
Okay, I'll, I'll have Rick answer. Rick's on the line, he'll, he'll.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because there's a dangerous drop off there and it's to keep people from falling into the channel.
True. Right, cor- correct, and that's one of the things that, uh, the, um, the designer looked at to make sure it is the right height.
So one last question. So did the designer choose to keep this wood and have three different? That was a, a decision. We decided we're gonna keep. That little piece, because I would think that that you would take the decorative fence all the way to the white fence. Cause it seems odd to keep what looks like a temporary thing to me. Was that an intention? That was an intentional design question I'm asking. So that was a decision someone decided and designed?
Um, I'll, I'll try and answer that and then I'll defer to, to Rick. I think that there's a, a few factors in there. One is, um, the cost of additional decorative fencing, but the secondary part is. Uh, I believe that the Park and Rec Committee and the foundation wanted to keep. The entry and exit gates that we have, so. It, yes, it was a conscious, conscious decision. That had the input from the Park and Rec Committee.
Okay.
But the, but the area that goes over the bridge. And the area that says exit only, that will be the new decorative.
That, that's correct. I'm gonna say that where you have the exit only is actually the side of the bridge that. Is right over the channel.
So none of that wood stuff would.
No, the wood slats would be gone.
Be there, that's what I was.
No, no, the woods, the brown wood slats are gone. It's the white stuff that stays.
The white stuff will stay.
Asking about the three different materials.
Oh, okay.
It's down to two. Okay, good.
I wanted to interject. If I may, so this is Mike.
Mike, yeah.
From Verdi. Uh, I believe I heard that we thought, so our drawings show those, the new, uh. Ornamental fence panels is being powder coated white to match. I, I thought I heard that they, it was thought they would be black, so they'd be. Our drawings currently have them as what being white to match, so I just wanted to mention that.
No, um, no, I, the, the decision was, and we'll, we'll, we'll look at the notes, Mike. But the decision by the Parks and Rec was, uh, to keep them black, keep it black.
Oh, okay, well, so then I'll just need to revise the drawings.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on the design elements?
Keeping the exits only sign?
Let me, let me just pause a minute and see if there's any public comment.
Okay. Slide Anthony. So, um. So this is in, keep going, there, there you go. Okay, so, um, as indicated in the staff report, we do have, uh. Grant funding signage requirements, basically acknowledgement of our funding partners. Uh, which include the state of California through Prop sixty-eight grant funds as well as Santa Clara County. Um, Stanford mitigation funds. We have approximately a hundred and eighty-two thousand. Of state funds and three hundred thousand from Santa Clara County. And so they have slightly different signage requirements. Both want recognition during project construction. As well as, um, in the case of the state, acknowledgement for at least four years post-construction. And permanently, um, from Santa Clara County. Next slide, please. So, um, I'm gonna apologize for a slight error in the staff report. Um, with regards to the logo requirement for the state sign. Um, I pulled up an old document and, um. I was, uh. Advised this morning that we, that there is a, um, a change in that, and I actually provided you with a, um. A full page copy of what the state requirements are. And so, um, what they require is language recognizing the governor. Uh, the Secretary of Natural Resources and the, uh, Department of Park and Recreation from the state. As well as the Prop sixty-eight logo. Um, the error that I had in the staff report was the size of the logo. I had it at one foot by one foot. But in further reading the current requirements, it's actually a two by two logo that's required for that sign.
Oh, because, and how big is Mr. Newsom's name supposed to be? What, five inches?
Um, I, I think we have some flexibility, um, with regards to that. But that, that acknowledgement you have, we have another slide coming that kind of shows a mockup of what somebody else did for their Prop sixty-eight sign. Um, and then there's a, a little more flexibility with regards to the Santa Clara County signage. They have some wording requirements. And they do ask us to run by whatever signage that we, uh, want to put up by them for their approval. It's not going to be, um, to the scale of the other sign. Next slide, please. Um, and so basically this is the acknowledgement that's required for the Santa Clara grant. Um, that they require language that says project made possible in part by funding from the county of Santa Clara. And that we obtain their review and approval before, uh, getting the plaque manufactured and installed.
And their donation is how much again?
Three hundred thousand.
And the state says?
State's is a hundred and eighty-two. Bless her mind. Um, again, the state one is required for four years, the Santa Clara one is permanent. Life of improvements. Um, next slide. So what we have here, this is. A sign, I'm not, we're not suggesting that this be the sign for the town, but this is an acknowledgement that was made. Um, for a different project with regards to the Prop sixty-eight funding.
What's the two by? What's the two by two you refer to?
Uh, if you look at the slide that's up where it says Prop sixty-eight, that logo, that's the two by two.
Looks like that's.
Just that logo is two by two.
Sets the scale for the whole thing.
That sets the scale, and so the wording and whatnot required by the state would likely be in line with that logo.
I like.
And then underneath it theoretically, we could put the recognition for the county of Santa Clara. Above it, we can put recognition for the council and or town funding.
Do we have to spell the governor's name correctly?
Alright, great. If we can combine them all, that would be terrific and then.
So, so the suggestion that I, I, I'd make is that for the during construction and maybe the four years having. A sign like this and it probably would end up being. Uh, a four by four or four by six type sign, we'd need to find a place to put it though, and that's. Input that we would want either from you or the Park and Rec Committee. But we need to have that placed.
The final sign?
Well, we can either separate out and have, um. The sign that's posted during construction lasts for the four years post-construction, or we can have it up, take it down and put up two different signs for. The post-construction.
Well, if you're gonna put a sign up. You know, you mean, you could hang it on the chain link fence to start with and then.
And then move it to a permanent location.
Plaque up, we can make that decision later.
So.
We don't have to make it today, do we?
No.
As long as the first sign includes all the information required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that too, and I have two other. Questions, none is. Are the capital letters all required and is the whole required?
I, if you look at the piece of paper that I provided to you, it's one of the previous slides, but I gave you an eight and a half by eleven sheet. It's not, it's, it's right under your, uh, presentation. Um, that's, that's the outlined requirements. It looks like this. And so the governor's name is all caps. It does not have the E. As on the image.
But it doesn't have to be bolded or anything.
It doesn't say bolded, it just says it has to contain the following language. It does say that, you know, obviously if there's changes in personnel. When we go out, then we're gonna have the current personnel. No.
And it, and it doesn't say this. Oh, and the spacing could be compressed, is that not correct?
Uh, it, it likely can. Like I said, I'd probably put the logo and just have the state's wording. Adjacent to the logo, Santa Clara. Either above or below that, and then town stuff at the top.
So there, there's a provision in here, Robert, I don't know if. You're familiar with anybody taking advantage of it or not, but it says exception, exceptions may be made.
Where appropriate.
Where appropriate, and then appropriateness of the sign where the sign may be out of place. Such as a small park or something, maybe we could ask for that.
We, we can try and do that.
A bit smaller. Right, it's not a huge road project or anything like that.
And we should say made possible with a small contribution relative to the town taxpayers.
Well, you can decide how big you want the town taxpayers to be recognized. Um, the next slide, please. Um, so this was a suggestion with regards to permanent signage for the Santa Clara grant. Is, uh, like a six inch by. Uh, one and a half, let's say a half foot by one and a half foot bronze plaque on a rock. Um, recognizing Santa Clara County. Uh, we would, as required by the agreement that we're gonna be entering into, run it by them to see if this is adequate. I think that putting this next to one of the pathways. Is. Fairly appropriate as a permanent place to put it.
The, um, just another comment, I was a part of that discussion, but. The brick accent areas are gonna have. Pavers in them that could theoretically be engraved at some point.
That's a possibility.
Could maybe a potential do an engraved. Larger size brick within one of those.
Yeah, we can step on it. Yeah, that's why I said we could step on it. Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can reach out as to. Right?
Yeah, the back part of the North Meadow.
I think there's one.
By the snail.
That goes over to. Uh, on, on the north side of the entry where, you know, there's that semi-circuited. Area that's not being developed, but. Where we talked about possibly putting a garden.
I think it's not, it's, it's just before this, right at the. I think it should be at the, where the walkway is going from the bridge to the. Uh, to the ballpark and it'll be on the railroad side.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna hold this up and. So this being the entry. This is the first area of decorative. Over here. We don't have any decorative pavers here.
Okay.
Uh, we, the decor, I'll, I'll go through, the decorative pavers are the junction point from the entry. Tying into the path that runs parallel to Watkins. The loop dry, and the loop driveway as well as the pathway along the entry. We have the junction point, uh, between the loop driveway and the pathway to the event garden and the playground. In front of the main house. Yeah. And then the other decorative are at the crosswalks near the exit. And going over to the North Meadow. So this area?
Yeah.
We'll see if we can get that. And that, that would be for, that would be for Santa Clara, correct? Okay. Okay, well, appreciate the input.
The one for the others in council needs to be in a different location. Same size as, uh. Governor Newsom's.
Okay, so next slide. Um, again, appreciate the input on, on the signage. Um, as indicated, you know, we are a bit over budget. Um, the estimated project cost to completion, including construction management, it's gonna be. Somewhere around one point three million. Um, based on the current estimate, the economy, as you know, is kind of changing a bit, and maybe we're gonna be able to take advantage. Of that, we won't know the actual costs until we go out to bid. But in preparation, because our estimates are high, we're trying to figure out where we might be able to. Save a little bit of money potentially, either by deferring work or. Trimming it out completely, yes.
Uh, is the complete project cost including the design cost?
Uh, the design was funded separately, I believe. So we have in our capital budget in this fiscal year is the one million seventy thousand, I believe.
But.
One million fifty.
So are these. Full construction drawings that we don't need to have redone?
What's that?
These are full construction.
Yeah, these are full construction drawings at this point. What we're talking about are their pieces that we wanna highlight as. Uh, additive alternates.
Okay. Just to be clear, so we've budgeted a million fifty.
That's correct.
We've got four hundred and eighty-two thousand grants.
That's included in that budget.
Wait, so we're putting in that of the grants?
Inclusive.
It's in, the, the budget that we have is inclusive of the grants. So the, the million fifty includes the four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars worth of grants.
So what are the furnishings?
Uh, so furnishings include, um, and pi- picnic tables, benches. I think there's a bike repair station. Uh, we have trash receptacles and a variety of other things. Um, some of those may potentially be accommodated via. Other budgets, um. During the next fiscal year.
What's the line item for the site furnishings? Do you know?
Well, right now they're in the project and so, but if they were pulled out and you wanted us to buy them in next year's operating budget, we can probably do that.
But we don't know how much it is.
I'm sorry, um. Mike or Rick, can you advise about how much we have in site furnishings?
Site furnishings right now, a total approximately forty thousand.
Yeah, so it's not that much.
It's not a lot.
Let me say, when we originally contemplated this project, we were budgeting a million dollars. We then got the grants. So we didn't need to put in as much money as we contemplated. This is the biggest project that the town will have ever done at the park. I think we should do the project.
I do too.
And I think it would be a real serious mistake for us. To, given how far this thing's come, it's like five years in process now. For us to cut this back, I, I think that would be the wrong decision.
Well, let's see what the real estimate comes.
When, can I ask a question? When you say you're gonna not, not get new furniture, would you then do the whole park and use the old tables?
Well, either that or we would find money, I mean, this project's gonna run into next fiscal year. So we would find, we'd allocate money out of next year's budget to kind of buy those furnishings. I, I don't think, I think we're gonna have to have them. It's not right to have a picnic area without picnic tables.
Right.
So it's just a matter of, the, the wording we have on there is defer, not, not do, but defer.
Okay.
Um, but if, uh. The council wants to wait and see what the numbers come in at and then decide to award the contract. Um, with a budget adjustment, we can, we can do that too. I think that's. We, we, we just wanna be upfront that we're over.
Forward, we wanna move forward and, and you know. Forward. We want to move forward and, and you know, taking herself, taking the ornamental fencing out at the entrance and the exits, I think is wrong. We need to leave it in. The irrigation and planting, that could be part of what, what Brightscape is, is proposing. We could add it into their contract, you know, for redoing the irrigation system and the furnishings was nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it's that, I mean, the council's point is, is we'll take it. If, if we can certainly, as I say, it's easier to go out to bid the way that it is. We don't have to modify things to make things that alternate. But it's with the understanding that, you know, we are over the allocated budget.
Robert, when, when do we do the mid-year budget review? February?
Yeah, so, but the bids will come out a little bit after that. But.
Well, I, I think at the budget review meeting, I think it'll be clear that we have the money to do this project. And even though I'm a little more conservative with money than some people here, I think this is, we shouldn't mess around with this. Now, if it comes in at a million seven or something, then then we have to have another conversation.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. Assuming we go out to bid and we've got a million fifty thousand in this year's budget and the bid comes in at more than that, then do we need to do a mid-year correction or can we say we'll make up the difference in next year's budget?
We, we need to award at the contract cost. So you need to identify the funding when you do that.
So I, I think the right thing to do is go out to bid for the whole project and see what it comes in at and then we'll discuss it.
Yeah, and the other thing we have to remember is that, you know, we talked about taking, you know, the OPEB money that we originally had put in the budget and funding it out of what we already have in there to a certain extent, fifty percent. And so that number would be something that would also backfill this.
At council direction, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, we have a surplus. We have about a three million dollar surplus this year, so we're in good shape.
Okay.
Okay, so let me take public comment.
The microphone? Just make sure the green light's on. Is the green light on? And hit the, hold it down for a second. There you go.
There we go. Just a small comment.
But speak into it because otherwise we can't hear you.
I'm aware there are at least three Boy Scout troops in this area who have Eagle Scout projects every year and they build picnic tables if we need picnic tables.
Okay, good, actually.
Yeah, maybe we'll tap them to build the fence around the tree.
They're not qualified ironworkers, but they can carry.
No, it would fence, wood fencing. If you have your contact information, I'm happy to take you to get, get ahold of them, so. Okay, thank you.
And there's a bunch in Palo Alto that are always looking for Eagle Scout projects.
Okay.
Okay, Stacy?
I just during this meeting got an email from a nonprofit that's looking for parks to do a native plant gardening where they would do all the work. We would have to contribute. It's looking for a resident, but I'm wondering if there's a nonprofit that might want to use our park and do all the plantings as an education and we could cut all of that budget if you guys have looked at. Something like that. I just got the email, so I don't know if this is a good idea, but.
I, that's something that's worth talking about totally separate from this project.
Ask one last question. In the drawing here, the fountain that's in the big oval, the front is grayed out. Does that mean we're eliminating that or is it still there?
Well, the fountain is there. It's not part of this project. I think we've been having some side conversations as to, we do want to restore a fountain at that location.
So we're keeping it. We're not, it's grayed out, not for a reason. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate the direction.
Great.
Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Mike.
I think that's the end of the agenda. Is there any public comment at the end of the meeting? Yes, please.
I was not aware that ADUs were not on the agenda. I was told by a friend, misinformed, that they would be. I have a question, maybe somebody can tell me.
And you can give a comment about ADUs if you wish. This is the right time.
Well, thank you. My name is Lee Kenna. I live on Fair Oaks Lane, about four hundred yards that way. And we have architects working on an ADU. The architects, someone told me that there will be new regulations for ADUs this year. Different than whatever they were for December. January's new. We have questions that we'd like to know who the most authoritative person might be to help answer before we pay for more than just architects. But particularly having to do with the new regulations for height, the attention, inclusion of attached storage like a barn to the ADU or putting a garage attached to the ADU or the angle setbacks from the property line for roof lines. All of which I understand can be sensitive and maybe they have been decided already, or maybe we're still negotiating. But before I build one, I'd like to know, and, and right now the question is, we're paying architects who need permitting and I'd rather not go through that rigmarole more than once. Who could give us guidance? Because I'd hope to see that person tomorrow.
That individual is Sung Kwon. He is the planning manager for the town.
S A N G?
S U N G K W O N, last name. And in just, in general, our AD ordinance is in the midst of being adjusted to comply with state law. That does impact the height, so that's one issue. I don't think it has much to do with setbacks at this point, but the roof line and other things are, I don't think, changing. But there are some requirements with respect to additions or size and things like that. But Sung could answer those questions.
If it's attached to a garage, it could be a different set of regulations than if it's attached to storage and.
It could, it could be based on size, yes.
And you'll have an answer or is he just going to tell me that we're still working on it?
He's going to have an answer for you.
Okay, and, and what are his office hours, please?
Nine to.
The planning counter is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So they'll be around tomorrow. I'm not sure if Sung's going to be in the office. But if you want, I can take your information. I can have Sung reach out to you directly.
Appreciate it. I'm going to meet Friday with architects.
Yeah, okay.
Or it'd be great.
But, but I want to add to the information that's been given to you because although you were told ADUs were going to be discussed tonight and that wasn't the right information, they will be discussed next Thursday. We have a meeting at three P M. Which is focused on our housing element and one of the components of that discussion will be ADUs. And in association with that discussion and probably not happening tomorrow, but it could be discussed, there could be some policy changes regarding ADUs which could have some impact, not the specifics that George responded to, but I know one thing that has been mentioned at the council is whether we want to authorize ADUs above garages that may have some relationship to the garage that you mentioned, even, even if it's not above, the, the, the issue of height could come up.
That's what we're worrying about. I mean, we've got, we meet the setbacks. If we go up fifteen feet, that's different than thirteen feet, et cetera.
That's right. So I'm just letting you know that next Thursday that will be discussed.
Here.
ADUs will be discussed. Whether these specifics end up being discussed is up to members of the council.
Can I make one comment with respect to that, Mayor DeGolia? So the ADU ordinance is separate and apart from the housing element, but they certainly are related as we're talking about our regional housing needs allocation number. Our existing ADU ordinance complied with the ADU law as was then adopted. The legislature has adopted more recent statutes that go into effect in twenty twenty-three. We will be revising the ordinance to reflect that, but in the meantime, we will be honoring what the state law requires with respect to height, which is twenty-five feet for attached ADUs or the height of the primary, whichever is left. So I just wanted to clarify that really quickly.
I'll try to follow up with Mr. Kwon and follow his guidance. Thank you.
Okay, that finishes our agenda. I've got a motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you, everybody.